No, that monitor, it's kind of like an all-in-one computer. It's all tied together and it's not very good. I think if that monitor's not on, can you hear us now, Stephanie? Stephanie, did you catch her? You can have a seat if you like while we wait. Feel bad standing there. I don't, I'm not sure yet. I'm gonna pull it up on my phone. Right. Okay.
Okay.
There you go. It's working.
Okay.
All right, now. You're fine. You're fine. You're fine. Uh, motion's been made in second at all in favor. I oppose. Motion carries. Motion is to, what?
I was just gonna ask.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and read it. The motion is to, uh, declare today, August 21st, National Senior Citizens Day, with the proclamation, whereas, excuse me, Osage County includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas, communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas, the Osage County Commissioners recognize the need to create communities that offers the services and supports older adults may need to make choices about how they age. And whereas, the Osage County Commissioners can work to build even better communities for our older residents by not limiting or thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore, we of the Osage County Commissioners do hereby proclaim August 21st, 2023, to be National Senior Citizens Day. We urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging. Thank you.
Do you all want to sign? You want us to sign them? You can take a few.
Yeah.
In regards to that too, um, I wanted to make sure everyone knows that this afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00, we will be having an open house at the senior center with games, uh, cornball, dominoes, whatever anybody wants to do. Uh, we could put a few options there. And, uh, we are also having refreshments from 1:00 to 3:00, so. And I would like to thank all of you for helping us get our new bus.
Oh, yeah.
It's great. We got to come over on it today.
Nice. Very good. Very good. Yep.
Yes, we'll come down and run over here.
Why they can't bring it?
For you, that way? Start as people about. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a good day.
Are you here for public comment? Come on up.
My name is Richard Kyle from Los Angeles City Campus. I got a copy of each one of it. Why I'm here is because, uh, when my name hit paperwork for delinquent taxes, I've never in my life had delinquent taxes. This is the fourth time I've brought this package to this building. I'll start off from the beginning, as I made a little, uh, cheat sheet for you guys. The back page, the very first one. As I put it together, but the back page starts with the lot split. This property was originally 28, or 25860 on Morale Road. It was originally 25 acres up for sale. Current people that own the house and the barn and the homestead bought 10 acres, and I bought the rest of it. So there was a lot split, which created an address, 25844 South Morale Road. These are all in order, I mean, if you want to pause the back. In July, I sold that property of 22. There's a copy of the contract. That's next. That's people that bought it. Next is the HUD. The HUD shows that I paid taxes from 01, January 1st, to July of 16. So we're on the left-hand side. It's $220.77. Okay, the next one is one of the most important parts that I've been trying to prove to these people over here. And I understand the people that I've talked to are no longer in this building. But you cannot get a warranty deed and transfer property if your taxes are not clear, no, you know, nothing owed on the bill, on the property. No taxes, no judgments, no state charging. If it's clear, I paid for it. I paid everything I needed to do. Then we come to the next one. I got a notice, uh, lab in 18 and 22, for $23.88 that I owe tax. I brought it into the county treasurer with a copy of everything that you have in with you. And I also left one with the registered deeds, the appraiser's office, and the treasurer. The light, the county treasurer told me she would take care of it based off of what she seen by the HUD. So that was on December 2nd when I come in here and talk to them. So then I thought we were good. Okay, then coming up, I got this county notice of property proposed taxes. And it still hasn't been listed for that property. So then I brought that over since this was mailed out by the county clerk's office. They're the only one that ever gave a package to me. So I gave, I talked to the gal, one of the workers up in the county clerk's office, and she said she would take the information and let me know. I mean, I know that was just last week. So I know that hadn't been done. That was on the 14th. So then we get to something that's really interesting, the next two pages. This is on your website, the county's website. They have taxes for 25844 South Morale, 2022, which you're saying I owe. Paid in full, first half, yes. Paid in full, second half, yes. There's no taxes owed on that property. But I also want you to know that, I mean, I personally, next thing I'm gonna tell you, I personally don't care. But you have done away with the property, the original property, where the bogs live. 25860 does not exist in your taxes. It's all been put on this address. Because the next sheet of paper shows the tax statements for that same property, which didn't exist until 2021, that's paid in full on 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021. How could that property be paid in full if it didn't exist until I split it in 21? And then the last one is where it showed up in the paper. That is embarrassing to hell to me. Forty-three years I've owned property in my life, and I have never, ever been delinquent on taxes. And I, I feel you guys owe a retraction on that. And hopefully you guys will get this straightened out. I'd like to see a retraction, and I'd like to see something in writing that has been taken care of from you guys. Because I brought more paperwork to you guys trying to get this straightened out, and I get nothing. And I know it's not the current people because they've all gone. This is two treasurers to go.
What was the address you said doesn't exist anymore, but should exist? That was the original.
That's the original homestead.
And then you split it.
We split it and created that address.
You sold a certain amount. Is this, but you only sold off a certain amount to someone else?
Right, but actually the same people own it all now.
The same people.
But what, but they. When the, when the time they bought it, they didn't have enough money to buy it all. So the realtor knew that I was looking for land, so she called me and I took it.
So the 25844 is the new address.
That's the one that I, we split and created with me. It has, I paid for the water already, the, you know, it's all set up for somebody to build on.
So even though they own both, are they technically two separate properties?
Yes, because when it got split, that's that deed, the very first one, that made it a new partial. Actually, what I think, if you notice on the deed, the deed was done on the 15th. The 16th, I paid the taxes to. My attorney thinks, in all that reality, that that 2388 is probably owed to me because I paid too much taxes. And they didn't know what to do with it, so it's just sitting out there, and somebody said, oh, well, he must owe that.
So did they buy one set of property first and then came back and bought?
Yes, they bought 20, 25860 first. And then when I put mine up for sale, I called them first to see if they wanted it. Now they got it all back into one piece.
But the, when you did the lot split, created something new to sell, that was the 25844 that was created? But you're saying they bought the 25860 first?
First, yeah. It was 25 acres, and they only bought 10 acres in the house. And I bought, well, it actually turned out after survey, 14 points up.
But they own both.
They own both now.
And they're technically two separate addresses.
They're no two separate addresses.
And the one that's got your name still on it is?
The 28, 8444.
So the new address that had the, the lot split is what shows that it's delinquent and still shows your name.
But it shows paid and it shows delinquent on me and paid on them.
Yeah. Say that again one more time. It shows delinquent on you.
Of 2388, which now with, with tax, or taxes and fees or whatever, a 742, according to what the paper said.
So do you have anything that shows the 25860 address? None of this paper shows.
No, it's not in your system anymore.
So did they put it back as one property?
I don't know what they did, but I don't know how you can when it's down to two parcels now.
See, this says. It says total acres is 13.4 on the 25844. Does that sound right?
Snake, I didn't hear you say it again.
It says total acres 13.4.
That's probably about right, yeah.
And that's on that new address.
That's on the new address. Because I don't know how they could go back and put all that property on box saying it's been paid since 2018, when it was only created in 2021. But it also shows 2022, there's no taxes owed on that property. Because I mean, I paid for the pit, for the water, for the rural water district, and we put, got the driveway in. I mean, it's all set up for somebody wanting to go in and build that. And I think down the road, they're going to. I think their grandparents or their parents, grandma, grandpa's gonna build down there. But I don't know.
Yeah, if there was, they're just, we're just gonna go back to, have them go back to the paperwork of the original lot split. Right? And start from there, is what's gonna have to happen.
But on July 15th, I was totally cleared and free from it, so how can I get a bill in November when it's not even my property? And that's what I told the treasurer. She said, oh, we'll take care of that, of course. Say that's two treasures to do.
Well, we'll have to, between deed, treasurer, appraiser, and I don't know if the clerk's also involved, there's different steps with different.
Talking with my realtor and, and advance title, they're the ones that did, you know, the HUD and all that. She said it probably needed to go, and I don't know. I have no idea. But she said probably gotta go back to land development. Because they're the ones that did the lots. But I don't know. That's just.
We'll have to start at the beginning of that process and see when it's split.
My attorney just said it was a mess. And I said, I got that part. I know that part. But I mean, to see my name in the paper. I mean, I've been a public official. I've been a mayor. I've been on city council. I went, I was mayor in 96, 95, 96, in Marshall County, we moved it through the flood. So I know the crap that you guys can get put up, you know, have to go against. But this is crazy. There's no reason I should have been in the paper.
Well, I apologize your name to the paper, and we will. My recommendation is it just goes back to the lot split process and start at the beginning. And work backwards and see.
Will somebody let me know if it's clear?
Well, you're, you're, you're gonna have to go up there and visit with them. That's the way I would go, but I would take. And I know it's a, I understand that, but. Yeah, you'll have to go. Yeah, look at this. This shows, so 25860, correct? And 25844. That's what we're talking about. So you've got 25844, and we've got 25860, correct? Those are the two addresses.
Yeah, that's original property.
Right. So that shows according to our website, uh, under a LaFontaine, Seth LaFontaine, when you Google that information. So we've got clearly a mistake somewhere.
You got one now?
When you, when you search our parcel search on our website, it comes up as a Seth LaFontaine.
That's who bogs bought that from.
Okay, so then we do, we do show on our website at least, the two separate parcels. I'm just trying to find the best place for you to start, because we clearly see that there's an issue. You've proven that. So we're gonna send you to the right.
I've been in the treasurer's office twice, they said they'd take care of it, and down here again. I mean, this, you guys need to take care of it. I tell them, this is my fourth time trying to get it taken care of in this building. And now you're gonna tell me I gotta go keep doing it.
Uh, I'm just trying to send you to the right office. I mean, you're standing here and I hear you loud and clear, but there's not much I can. You know, we have to get it figured out in the right office to be able to make that.
But I don't wanna have to come back here because if I do, I'm bringing my attorney.
I think the departments need to get together and work through it, because there's different.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
There's different processes as it goes through with each of the, so the departments need to figure out who needs to do one.
Because when Becky was trying to talk to Becky, and Becky told me it was all right. Treasurer told me it was fine. The appraiser told me there's nothing, it's not on his side. And the registered deed process, the deed, and said we were clear.
Well, I think they're gonna have to get back together again.
Who do you want, who do you want me to go see first?
Did you have something to give him?
Yeah, well, I printed off the statements for both of those addresses. The description on one of them says like there's 13.4 acres, everyone's 23.
23 is the one that got split. It was approximately 25 acres when they started out.
Yeah, and can you visit?
I have the 13.3.
Can you visit with her with what she has, and that might be a starting place if there's areas of that?
Can I get one of my copies back?
Please, please stick with him. Thank you. Because this, it's just frustrating. I'm not laughing. It's frustrating.
Thank you for listening.
That is interesting. That's the way you presented that. That's perfect. You can always tell when Josh gets here. He's a little loud. We have any other public comments from anybody? You have public comment? With no other public comments, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting, and we will move into Venice, Lower Creek, 40 CP. Oh, yeah, we'll wait on the minutes here, since we're right up against nine o'clock. We might want to move that approval of minutes towards the end of the agenda anyway. Might be a good idea. Thank you, sir.
Rick, I didn't see, I didn't see the, I'm missing it.
You guys can come on up if you want.
So I can just go over the changes that I made here, and if there's anything missing. We'll talk about that in general conversation. So the first thing is I, uh, it's my understanding, you've been talking with, uh, that representatives that everything that went over was okay, except that the, um, North Parcel, parcel identified in section nine, the road agreement that just passed out, Shahuapi Board through December 31st, can be five, the request would be to make that 2024. So it would be in, uh, next year. Is that the request?
That's our request, yes.
So with that, uh, that's not reflected in that current, you can just strike 2025 and 2024. Everything else, uh, no changes to, uh, paragraph two. Changes, uh, paragraph three, for loading, I changed, um, all gates must be closed to truck traffic between hours 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM. Changed the second paragraph, and paragraph seven, trucking safety, from request by the county, means states shall provide all truck number, time, speed, and GPS location, truck log data to the county for standard. A, maintenance of the haul route. East 189th Road from Barrington Road to US 75, shall follow industrial schedule and cost reimbursement schedule. For the first year, county and mid-state shall work together to apply magnesium chloride flakes and water three times on the entire length of the designated haul route at an application determined by the county. With all material costs reimbursed. With all material costs to be reimbursed by, to county by mid-state.
And we're fine with that language, but technically we'll probably just buy it ourselves and give it to you, but that works.
It works our hard to change that.
Uh, it's a distinction without a difference.
A, B, during the second year of this agreement, at the county's discretion, industrial control shall either be applied, colon, one, as provided in subsection A, eight, or two, chemical dust control shall be, should we say, shall be applied twice per year by the county and reimbursed by mid-state.
The only thing I have on that is I thought that we had agreed.
The second one would be 500 foot.
Yes, sir.
Here by the county on the entire length of the road section described. Probably doesn't work since it's supposed to. We're not even addressing that, so give it a big handle on the first.
Yeah.
Ryan, where do you get, uh, you guys got somewhere to get loaded up much longer than I could? Or where do we have a place to get loaded up?
We'll supply.
Yeah, we've got, we've got lots. 500 feet in front of each residence driveway.
Not the primary driveway.
What'd you say?
Primary driveway. Even my little old shack at home has two driveways.
So that chemical dust control, um, on the first year, since it's gonna be flakes, you're buying the cost, and then the county will apply it. You're buying the materials. The second year, it may be, uh, necessary to contract with an applicator as well. So it would be all costs to be reimbursed by mid-state. We're just not sure how the flakes are gonna work, so I think that's why that word, word is in there. But we're gonna try it first year.
Yeah, yeah, that will be three times a year. With, uh, we cut in the spreaders, right ridge.
Yeah.
Lay it down on the road and then, um, spray it with water to activate.
And, and what we're going to do is we're actually gonna contact the company and have them set a technician down on that first application. So we'll have a, an expert there to help, help all of us.
We're just wanting to see how to do the leader on the salt lake.
Exactly.
We're spreading and have the correction rate.
Right.
We don't wanna do it too thin, or give us the best foot forward on, uh, product application. So let me go over this language now with time. A, B, during the second year of this agreement, at the county's discretion, the dust control shall either be applied, one, as provided in subsection A, eight, or two, chemical dust control shall be applied once per year by the county on the entire length of the road section described above. And one subsequent application, 500 feet in front of each primary residential driveway on the road section described above, with all costs to be reimbursed by mid-state. Uh, North Parcel changed to 2024, and then, uh, following was changed, there shall be a 100-foot no blasting setback as measured from neighboring property lines, and a 200-foot no blasting setback as measured from existing, by the day of the adoption resolution and inhabited residences immediately located in East 22th Park. Good manner to say whichever.
Which is great.
Any questions? If you finalize this and print it. You're ready to afford I'm going to print the CUP as well.
Any further discussion Heather? Okay.
I believe this is probably fair deal to County, to Meadows and to the Rose Benson. The reason I can say that ain't nobody happy with it, so. County's not happy with it, Fettis had one, the president said that road weren't happy with it, so that means that everybody wants something.
My contractor's lawyer in your level of law school said that the definition of a good contractor is when both sides walk away unhappy.
So I think it is something that the county can work with. It's far more than competitive back to some. With that, I would have a problem with. Passing resolution two.
Motion to pass resolution number 23 dash Z dash 05. Second. I'll second it myself. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Josh, you may proceed now with the conditional use, that's, all this is. Covered under that resolution 23 dash Z dash 05, right, or did we have another?
Yeah, the road agreement, we agree just. Consider that, I can put that next.
Jack, you're.
Say that again.
I have something.
Oh.
Cause I'll get the copy whether followed.
Right.
Is that, you guys want copies of the final?
No, we'll get one for Ryan, one for Mike, and one for.
Review one more here.
So one, one thing that I think. I may have switched around is that the. Maintenance of the haul route should probably be in the road agreement. So I want to switch A, A and B. And put that into the road agreement and then road agreement for the CUP would actually. Read east 189th Road from Barrington Road, US 75, shall desk control five as specified in the road. That means in two years, if you renegotiate. Desk control to be something else than the CUP tracks better current road. That. Or clarify. I'll put that.
This is just what he typed up, just to put everything together.
Yeah.
Just looking it over, make sure it's spelling here.
That's what he's putting right now. They printed the road agreement. I'll take it now, put it in.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, swap, this would be the finalized resolution.
Hey Josh, the attachment A and B make more sense in color. Do you want me to scan one and send one down to you later, Greg?
Yeah, so that road agreement will just be executed as part of this today.
Right.
Will execute.
We can swap out the color versions.
Yeah. So on the road agreement, you'll notice on five, I've got the language to be just whatever. And then on paragraph. Eight of the permit now. Says maintenance of the haul route. Uh, the stretch of desk control five is prescribed in route. So the CUP is in 20 years. And with a lot of. Um, so everyone's on the same page. I think the motion would be to. The amended word language in resolution number 23 dash B dash zero, zero five and authorize the chair to execute the road agreement. Yeah, I think that's got all the paper off there. I can make it just a chair. You can wear that.
Yeah.
But can you turn it, does that mean?
I guess I'm just.
I'm just saying, if, if the motion's going to be two to one, any. Grateful, then really the motion is to authorize the county to execute it as far off.
So that's with the road agreement over the resolution, but.
The resolution. Is just, it's adopted and maybe, I don't know. I think the commissioners should sign the resolution, anyone, Commissioner Cooter. She's voting no, can know that or sign it or not sign it, it's passed, but if she was not sign it. Vote no, it's still effective.
I do have, I hate to negotiate against my own interest, but integration. Be trustworthy here, but I think in your section three term, you, you have the agreement ending in five years, and I think we said it should be two. Section three.
On the road, road section. Pardon, on the road group section. So if we did these one at a time, then I would make the motion that we approve. The updated version of resolution 23 zero five, which is the resolution, especially to allow the operations of blocks that were allocated in the six count.
I'll second that motion, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor.
I didn't hear that. Is the motion to approve the updated version of the permit or approve the road agreement?
Approved, the updated version of the resolution, we've already approved. By the way, I've provided so.
And then we'll approve the road agreement separately.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Other thing, and it really is a distinction without a difference, but I think in our previous discussions, we admit states shall acquire other quarry traffic to utilize the designated haul ride route. Ultimately, that was my suggestion semantics, so unless someone has strong feelings about it, we can keep it current.
Is it? Yeah.
Sorry, say that again.
So basically I have, should missage shall require other quarry traffic, utilize the designated haul ride by sign, signage, regulations and oral communications. Uh, I haven't heard it here, I can change that, since I'm already changing the fact that I want to find this dude.
Sorry, my name's wrong.
I should have. I'm sorry, yeah, crudder again. That's not nice. Shred that one. That's not nice.
Why don't you guys meet up to this? Uh, okay, I've got that changed on the. Final version of. Resolution. That was, I think that's the ending motion, I can do, we can print it now.
On the 23rd, I guess I wrote on the.
That was just, yes, that was just approved, so change Heather crudder to Cooter.
Got it, and then the. Road agreement, Jay, five or two, form of discussions.
I understand what's under the. The intention of the.
No, I'm fine with what you've said, I.
And before you print the final, it's also wrong on the road.
So the road agreement I took. I think. The commissioner's law and just putting a chair, just authorizing the chair to. So I fixed it differently.
So why would they know that not like that way? I mean, the chair is not, and I'm trying to take it on that for anybody else, but the chair does, does not go out of the official roof and inside. It's still got to be by the board kind of.
You have to authorize any county official potentially to execute. But the act of execution is an administrative or executive function, not a legislative function. Unless you're approving that versus a resolution or something. Because that's why at least.
So I would make the motion that we have our chairman sign. The six county road pretty much between the six county. And mid-state's material for the haul route number three, 189th.
And I'll second, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
You guys need a signed copy to take back to Eric. Correct after we get. And then you'll get a copy back, does that?
Yes.
There the files. If we sign the word, the word copy, the. Cause before we couldn't have a copy.
We don't need an original of the same period, it's not the same period.
Yeah, he does that, original copy.
But send me two signature papers on the road.
So you can tell your last name.
There it is. Official one.
That's the, do you want to sign the, the resolutions?
Yeah, I can sign that, I'll just note the note to the side, but I'll sign it.
Road, permit, all copy.
Stream it in red and colored.
This one's just you.
He gives such a great explanation.
I say, I love that.
The executive versus legislative functions, it was like sitting in a law school class.
The attachment, they have all that moving to the page.
Hold on, looks so excited.
I'm tired.
Got Texas again?
No, he went to.
Another vacation.
He went to, where'd he go, Colorado?
There you are, sir.
The flight got delayed, I got, I walked in the door at two in the morning last night.
Do you want copies of these, sign, I'll make copies and send. Separate state copies with you.
Okay.
And then you can swap out the color.
Sure.
And in some time, who does, I'll make contact with you guys and sell our stuff for next year. Get that, so make sure we have this on, because we gotta think of this contact that Mike already has it. The company is coming to help me with this one.
Yeah, that's good point. We're pretty hopeful about this product, I mean, if it works, we can use it in a lot of places. And it could be a game changer for counties too, even on their non-quarry roads. So we're going to play it up with them, like, dude, you can make a lot of money in the state of Kansas, so get your butt down here. We even, we even talked to him about being a dealer. We even talked to them about being a dealer here, but they've already got their assigned salesperson. We'll try to get them to the KAC conference and stuff like that.
That'd be good. I know cities that could use that stuff too.
I didn't even think about that, but yeah, you're right.
We've got a mile and a half gravel road throughout our towns. And we excited to see how it works.
Yeah.
So he's gonna I guess you want the he's gonna pick. You want the original, just to have it and or they're written or you just wanna do a different citation?
It doesn't matter. We do it both ways.
Let's do a different citation.
Anything else? Look at the details.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
Yeah, we got about fifteen minutes. Did you guys get to look over the what?
We have, I know we had the bids for the road. When do we have to open it? We have, I got time to do it now, so I think we closed with four o'clock on.
Yeah, I closed it into business day on Friday, correct, right?
Four P M. Friday was in the bid due date. So do we want to do that before we get to P V C Scott?
Now it's repeating things as you say. It's like, like you said, we've got fifteen minutes and then again it says we've got fifteen minutes. And when you guys were talking with the best people, it kept repeating on top of over and over the way you guys were saying. It's, it's really messed up. I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, so which guy opened it?
It's me. No, I'm just, I'm just kind of over here listening to it. Don't make a bid. Sorry, I keep delivering bad news. So your first official day upstairs?
First official day.
So you got a project you get to work on with the lots issue?
Yeah, yeah, it's on the.
High five. I, I think, I think there's, there's actually been some issues like that in the past. I have a friend in the real room when I was first got on the issue. Let me tell you some of the issues that we ran into in property. So the lots thing has been.
It is kind of confusing.
Yeah.
It sounded like we just need to decline, go back to that step.
Yeah, you gotta start with the date and then look at all the processes and see what got missed on.
Where's the drop in? No longer go to this property.
And then like change the names, I think only happens like once a year or twice a year. It's like, it doesn't happen automatically or something, which I've never understood.
The system.
I'm not sure, but like, because I cousin, she had the same thing happen to her. She lost it. And then when she got her tax statement, it still happened to her head. So she was trying to get it fixed. They're like, well, sometimes such time periods when all that she could do is. To me, you think you would change your.
I'm gonna see here. We get any good.
Those are the good things to learn. Because the public, when they ask, kind of educate. Which one?
I could hear you in, I could hear both conversations. That's weird. It just keeps echoing it. Yeah.
Don't need the, the permit and the road agreement for their files, because they have to keep the permits on file.
It's time again. It's time to get rid of that.